Okay, minutes?
Uh, wait, let's see Charlie, he's just writing over there.
You all set?
I'm all set.
I move that we accept the minutes from April 11th.
All set for that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's get rolling here. Ashley Barber.
Here. Got a proof of mailings?
Well, it's not when you're ready.
Oh, way down, yeah. Nope, okay.
Right now?
Yep.
Hey, uh, he said they're ready. Alright, you guys, uh, your order dates.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Jack Bars from Farm Club on behalf of Ashley Barber. Our project is located at 273, 2753 Pleasant Street. The lot is approximately 22,860 square feet. And the proposed work is for a septic repair of an existing dwelling. The property is in the AE flood zone, which is a reason for the notice of intent. The plans have already been submitted to the board of health and their latest revisions have been applied to this latest drawing.
Okay, alright. I just wanted to...
Keep going. I'm good, that's all I got. Okay.
Okay, you been there?
Yep. That program.
Okay, so this is the house right in the corner, though?
Right on the corner.
Okay.
It's beyond the upper front area. There's no wetlands on the property or near it.
Correct.
Just a straight old...
So we filed the notice of intent for...
It's because it's in the AE coastal zone.
Okay, alright. Okay. Is this a raise system that you're gonna have to make?
There's a little bit of a mound, not really. The existing condo is 107 back here, we're pulling it back a little bit.
Oh, alright, okay.
And the highest peak are gonna be maybe nine, around nine.
Big system.
Yeah, seven bedrooms.
Yeah. Four, four pipes?
Yeah, four bedrooms on the first floor, three bedrooms on the second floor.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, seven bedrooms there.
Yeah. A very big system.
How did that handle, how did the old system handle it? Or the bedroom just kept on increasing through the years?
Apparently, well, it failed, that's why we're here, so. Um, I'm not sure about the past experience with the bedroom expanding. I know that it used to be a two-family, now it's converted into a one-family, so there's just one family living there, but there are a lot of people living there, so. We had the assessors go by and verify that there were seven bedrooms.
There's not one family living there, there's two families.
Oh, there is two families?
I lived there.
Okay, I apologize. Cause I spoke to Ashley, she said that was just one, I'm like, okay.
That system will last you a long, long time, unless you get diarrhea every day and...
Now that they know you're there, you're gonna have to start paying rent.
Excuse me?
Now that they know you're there, you shouldn't have said nothing.
I've been paying the rent right alone.
Of course you have.
Okay, eight feet, nine feet. So it's gonna be a slight mound.
Straight old repair, but that is a big system.
Yeah.
Real big.
Yeah.
What is the square footage on the system, on the leaching?
Oh, it's 48 feet long by, these are 12 foot on center. So.
Twenty, oh yeah, 24 by 21 maybe?
Yeah. They're close to 37 by 48.
So it's, uh... That's gonna be close to 500 square feet?
Yeah. Yeah. I believe it's, the leaching alone is... Yeah, something like that, five, five and change.
Okay.
It's one of the big ones I designed.
Yeah.
Big system. Got any questions, Jim?
No, I'm just reading all the, there is, there are no no's of this and this and that. No, that's just, uh...
Charlie?
I don't have any questions.
No. Okay, uh, I move that we, uh, accept the proposal and issue an arduous conditions?
All set for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is it notice of intent?
Let's write some arduous conditions. Okay, um...
Anton Rodrick. Have to continue that hearing, I suppose.
Who's that?
David DeRosa.
Here. Present.
I don't know why I continued. The 59, he called me last Friday, explained that Brandon had a busy schedule because of his workshop meeting. And was also unable to complete the notice of tonight's meeting.
Apparently Brandon was busy with the annual MAC meeting. He was...
Yeah, he does do that.
So he didn't have a chance to prepare a notice of intent for him.
But he's, he had January and February match as well, though.
Well, I don't know if he was fully prepared to, uh, he didn't have all the information he needed.
I'm not exactly sure what, I mean, everything's been flagged.
Did he flag it?
Did.
Okay.
Brandon flagged it. John Delano, the last meeting that we were here, uh, the last portion of Brandon's flagging, John Delano had to come back out and re-mark on the plan. I think that's where that was. When I talked to Brandon again, and he's just completely swamped. I don't know. It's on here.
Okay.
Well, I know that he told me, uh, he was going to file for Horton Street and that he would be busy in the spring, and apparently he meant what he said.
Okay, so we're finished with those three, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we continue his hearing till 50 of June. And the same with Mr. Rodrick. I heard that he was not feeling well. I don't know exactly what his problem is, but, uh...
Is he home or hospitalized, do you know?
Well, he was in the hospital. I'm not sure if he's home or not, I haven't seen him.
I haven't seen him. Last I heard, he supposedly, he had some sort of virus or something. And it was making him blind. Very limited on his eyesight and all, and, uh, that's kind of all I've heard. I haven't talked to anybody since. But I haven't seen any activity and I haven't seen him.
Wish him the best and, uh...
Yeah.
Consist him for recovery and, uh, we hope to see him in the future.
Alright.
Okay, you're all set for?
I have, yeah, I have one question. So I was at a soil conservation meeting upstairs. Soil. Soil conservation?
Yeah, it's different from us.
And the Dayton police station is gonna be giving, we're gonna be getting rid of all the gravel that's on Dayton police station. I can stockpile it in my yard, but it's very limited over there. I know that there's a, um, we have an issue with my land.
You're talking about the...
The front parcel.
The new police station site?
The new police station site, that's correct. So if you look to the left of it...
What's gonna happen to the material?
So the material is gonna be hauled off of that site so that they can finish the septic system and everything else and brought down to my site. But I wanted to clarify everything with, I already clarified it with the...
You're gonna just throw it all back?
No. I wanted, if it was okay with you guys, what I wanted to do was put it up front. But what I wanted to do was, and I know that, I've already talked soil conservation. I'm essentially gonna continue the parking area going up front. But what I wanted to do is kind of make like a road running parallel with 138, so I wanted to strip out what the loom was there, pile it off to the left, and then use the gravel for the, um, uh, to build up the, to build up the site.
Beyond the 100-foot buffer?
From what Brandon marked, yes.
From?
Well beyond that.
Okay.
Well, it's beyond that, that's not in our jurisdiction. There, it's well beyond it. Just don't get yourself into trouble, again. Or there's a guy on Baby who might take it and hold it for you.
Yeah, I know that guy.
Do us a favor.
Sure.
Stake it.
Yeah.
Make sure it's 100 feet away, drop some stakes in. So that if there's any questions from other people, we can verify that you're not using, you're not in a buffer zone for wetland area.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, cause I know that there's a... Cause it says everything, it doesn't say, it doesn't, right. Yeah, we learned, we learned that one.
If you had a series of problems, might as well eliminate another one.
Yeah, so that's, that was my question. If it does run into 100-foot buffer with, I don't believe it would, I believe it's well beyond that.
You'd be right back to finding an IDA.
Okay.
Are you getting another enforcement? If you're working that in the buffer zone? Just, you know, if he's getting flagged.
Got you.
Just make, if you go 125 feet, that's gonna be safe. Just stake where you're gonna, where you're gonna drop the fill.
Right, so now, um, where I strip out the loom, you know, a foot or whatever, however much material is there, I'm gonna strip it out to the subsoil, I'm gonna bring in the fill, and I'm gonna pile it up to the left, like, away from the road.
Wait a minute, when you say left, you're facing, you're facing west, so left is...
I'm facing north, I'm facing north to the left into the property. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put it on 138, put it that way, I'm gonna put it the other way.
Yeah.
So if I put it, if I put it into, um, into my, onto my property, as far as siltation or anything like that, I mean, the property already was silt.
You could run, uh...
I already have, I already have socks up there.
Oh, that's right.
And there is, yeah, per tony specs. And there's, um, all of the vegetation now is all grown in, so I'm, that's gonna stop all of the runoff, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm not gonna be required to put any more siltation up. I mean, the siltation's already there. And it's, let's assume at this point, obviously I'll, I'll measure it, but let's assume that it's over 100 feet away from the pile to the flags.
Well, it has to be over 100, not assume, has to be. Where you're gonna put that.
Correct.
Put the stakes in, where you're gonna drop, where you're gonna dig out, where you're gonna put the new fill, and give us a call, and then we'll just go and say, okay.
Alright.
Cause if he's already got the wetland flags there.
That's mostly sand over there. The new state, where the new police station.
Sandy gravel.
Yeah, not a lot of gravel, but there's a lot of sand.
I'm familiar with that particular hill.
Yeah.
Little gravel.
It's nice material there. Nice material, for sure. But I just wanted to get it out of there, and obviously I had questions on it from the soil conservation side of it, from conservation side of it, just to make sure that there was no...
Well, if you do want to the problem, you still have the storage area in the back.
Right.
As long as you stay away from 100-foot buffer out back, you can drop it in there too.
Right, right. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It was used for storage of sand for a long, long time.
Right.
Alright, okay, very good.
And before we go any further, I did receive an email that the, we would have an appearance with the...
Open Space Committee, yeah. So we can see us on the agenda, do we need to reschedule or?
Pardon?
We, we weren't, it doesn't seem like we were on the agenda, do we need to reschedule?
No, I didn't put it on the agenda, I forgot about it.
Yeah, okay, so we can reschedule?
But you're here.
Yeah, we're all set.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're the good guys.
Alright, if you're comfortable with that, okay, that's fine with us.
Ask David DeRosa, he'll tell you, we're the good guys.
We know these guys.
Yeah, we just had some questions, we were just gathering information for our open space plan and that kind of thing, and so we've been looking through, um, uh, the master plan. And so we had a couple of questions, they came up through that, and then some other ones that would come up on our own. This question arose because of what was in the master plan, about how, how do you guys, how are you, uh, decide, how are conservation priorities decided in the town, and what are they? So like, for example, I know for a long time, you were very interested in acquiring land along Broad Cove, and that was one of the priorities that you guys had. Do you guys currently have, um, something in mind, or some kind of strategy that you're using to, when you, to decide what properties you're purchasing? That we should reflect in our, in our plan when we write it?
Well, I'm still picking away at that salt marsh down there.
You are, okay.
And, uh, almost done.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, I'm encouraging any contractor to, uh, to make donations. No, we've done okay.
You have?
We've done okay.
You guys do really well. So that, that's kind of a policy of, of the commission then, when you have the opportunity to pick up land as part of a development, to get land set aside, you encourage it?
Absolutely.
Alright, that's good. A lot of people don't do that.
No, we just, what is it, the dyer, we got 10 acres of land up off of North Street, is it?
I need to know. Yeah, Otis Dyer.
Oh yeah, Otis, yeah.
Junior.
Yep.
He died and we inherited his parcel up off Chestnut Street, right behind the town forest.
Nice.
Actually, it's a property separating it, but it's in that general vicinity.
And you know what we got growing out here along the parking lot, don't you?
Is it legal?
Anything's legal, it must shift its...
Massachusetts, I forget, yeah, yeah.
The American chestnuts.
Oh yeah, oh, that's right, you got, yeah.
So I'm hoping to get blooms this year to, and maybe we'll put them out there.
That's right, I remember you were trying to get them to come back, yeah.
Yeah, well, I've got a bunch of them.
I know.
Well behind my house, so, so I'm hoping that, I'm hoping, well, the deer love them too much and the bugs too.
Heard you have a grandson that can take care of that problem.
Yeah, he's a good shot.
Who's that?
My grandson's.
Oh.
Yeah. Actually, I go sit out there, but I think it's more for just personal decoration of the tree. And I look at the squirrels.
I follow sea by the time of the world.
Haven't shot anything in a few years.
So I'm not trying to understand what you're saying, so like, if a developer comes in here, is developing a part, you know, a parcel of land, you guys try to encourage them to donate some of the land, is that what you're saying to me, or?
Well, if they have land that they can't use because it's wet, or because there's turtles, or because...
Anytime you wanna leave, you get up and go, I'll follow you. I just gotta have a word with Mr. DeRosa here.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, so, you know, it's like, we can't, we gotta be careful. We can't, we can't say, hey, you know, uh, if you do this, because we can't, we can't make any deals.
Right, of course.
So, uh...
Right. Yeah, I...
We just say, if land you can't use, we accept.
Okay, that makes sense to me, yeah. Alright, and the other thing that was in the, uh, the, um, the master plan was, there was a thing about developing a well and protection bylaw. I didn't understand what that was, and...
Not for most.
Not for us.
There are protections under the Wetland Act, but we don't have anything under, uh, well, we may have something included in our bylaw.
Okay. Okay.
But you guys, I think what the master plan consultant was getting at, and may not have talked to you guys, is there a need for local wetlands protection bylaw on top of what you guys already enforce?
We have what we...
We have more than some of the states got. Some of our, some of our rules.
Okay, yeah, so that's, so that's odd, that was an odd comment, but...
Our communal pool protection goes well beyond what the state does.
Yeah, we were talking about that before, yeah. So I, maybe it was just an odd comment that they made. No idea, but it's in your master plan anyways, talk about developing a wetlands protection bylaw, so maybe they didn't talk to you guys.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, that's...
I know the Commonwealth has well protections for public water.
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
Right. The other, other question we had was about the Zeneca property. Do you see any future potential uses for that property, or development?
Nobody will ever do anything with that except Zeneca.
Okay.
They don't want the liability, so they'll just hang on to it. That's, that's a statement from Zeneca. That's why they don't let anybody on it, they don't want anybody on it. And it's gonna stay in their possession.
Okay.
So it's limited to the owner, if the owner wants to try to do something with it, then that's their thing, otherwise...
Well, I mean, it's dirty ground.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody says it's okay until they go down there, and then something happens, and then here comes a big lawsuit.
Yeah, at one time, there was gonna be a tilapia plant there.
The aquaculture school, remember, they, they wanted to do an aquaculture school.
And I don't know what happened to that, but it just went poof, it disappeared.
Yeah, the bottom fell off.
They also wanted the wastewater treatment plant, and wanted to give to the town. The town barked and hammered it hard, and they said, okay, we'll take it down.
Yeah.
They lost all their map, poof.
Okay, um, do we have that map that we were, that you had pitched up?
Yeah, you guys, we passed a map on, you guys could do conservation properties on, do you guys still have that map? Remember the big one, the, uh...
It was a poster size?
I passed it on to somebody.
Oh, you gave it back to somebody? Okay.
I did work on it.
I remember.
Was that, wait a minute, was that, um, Tim, Tim, CPC president, chairman?
Tim Reins?
Tim.
Oh, you gave it back to Tim?
Yeah.
Alright, that's good, as long as we can run it down.
I did, I did, I, I went through it and I did all kinds of, um, you know, I made additions. And I even put that, I even put that dyer property in, I put a lot of properties in, so he, if he, he hasn't, if he hasn't given it back to you.
Okay, so Tim probably...
Okay, well, track down Tim then.
Okay, well, that's good, so you guys, you did a really thorough job, so all your stuff is on there, because a lot, the impetus behind that was, when you go to the state database a lot of times, and you're, you're kind of a prisoner of their land use and what they have in there for land use codes. And when we ran it off of our GIS system at Serpent, it came up and a lot of the things, you know, my, my technician said, a lot of these are coming up blank, a lot of them don't have numbers, a lot of them are identified as conservation properties, so I said, let's, let's give you guys...
What I did, I mean, I looked at all town properties, because all conservation property is town property. So in some cases, it doesn't say conservation land.
No, that's fine.
But it'll say town property, but it was given to the Conservation Commission, or we purchased it.
Right. Yeah, and that's the thing, what we wanted to do is, for this plan, when we sent it in, we wanted to have the most up-to-date land use plan, so that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has it, because you have to file your open space plan with them. And when they take your map, they're supposed to digitize the parcels off your map so that you're current. Now, a lot of times that doesn't happen, but at least the town will have the most current version of their plan, because it'll come to us and we'll digitize it for the town, we'll put everything in their digital.
Now, this was several months ago that I did this.
Yeah, it was in a couple months, yeah.
Yeah. Probably, yeah, probably February, I think January, February, he gave the maps to, uh...
Could have been that long, maybe, you know...
Oh, yeah. Okay, good, well, if Tim's got them, then I'll, I'll get them from Tim, we'll digitize them.
Yeah, so one of the things that's come up at the, uh, our open space committee is about how, um, this is actually something Bill's brought up, about making sure that all the properties that have been, you know, acquired by the town for conservation purposes are properly labeled and properly deeded that way. Is that something that we should be thinking about and putting in our open space plan as one of our goals then?
What I was, yeah, what I was thinking about when I was talking to these guys is, some towns we've worked with, when they go back in and look at the parcels, they realize they have to file corrective deeds on them, because they might have been taken, um, by the town for a specific purpose, like voted at town meeting or conveyed by an owner, say, to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. But they sit there as town property, and the deeds have to be corrected to show that there was a vote, that there was a equitable or something like that. Do you guys ever run into problems like that with your properties?
Not yet.
No? Okay, that, well, that's good, so if you haven't, then that's good. Otherwise, as I said, it's usually a simple process to go file a corrective deed, you know, with the county, just get the town meeting vote, staple it on there, certify it, and it goes in there as your property, so. Well, it's good, okay.
Okay. And then the other thing that came up was, um, especially more about outdoor recreation and that kind of thing, because obviously it's open space and, and recreation, so the, um, several things came up as possible projects, and I'd kind of like to get your sense about the feasibility and whether or not there's something, um, that we should know about these ideas. So one thing that I'm sure you've heard about is the, uh, the proposal for a bike path along the Taunton River, and that kind of thing for the state, I think they're, I think they're proposing to use the...
Sweet Snoll.
Sweet Snoll and that kind of thing is, what's your reaction to that?
Well, it can only go so far, because it's private property both sides, so...
Yeah, well, we're gonna...
I think the plan was to put some of it on the street?
Yeah, some, some of it's gonna go...
I mean, it, you know, most of it's gonna be on the street till it gets down there.
Yeah, we were talking about, and this has been on the books for years, I think I started working on it about 27 years ago now, actually with the towns. It's gonna go up Riverside Avenue, now you got the Veterans Memorial Bridge, which has a sidewalk for pedestrians and a bike lane on it, so you get over from Fall River, go around the corner, go up Riverside, right through Somerset, which still has old DEM bikeway signs. So the selectmen down there said, yeah, come up with some new signage, because what we're gonna do is create, it's called Taunton River Trail, and it's gonna have a canoe sign on it, a walking sign, and a bike sign, because we have places where we can put in and paddle. So you're gonna go up Riverside, go to Pleasant, you know, Long Water, then up to Pleasant, and when you get to Pleasant, behind Giorgio's, that's where you can enter Sweet Snoll on the track, because the state owns that part, and then you go all the way through Sweet Snoll on the track there. We just got a grant to do engineering and design on the trail there.
You're gonna, you're gonna do something with Center Street, though, because they never put a culvert in.
Well, they filled in the culvert that was under the bridge.
Yeah, but that's, on the other side of that, that's all private. And a lot of that's owned by TMLP, their princess house, so you're gonna have to come off again.
Yeah.
And then up through Taunton, there's very little up there either, so, I mean, you're basically gonna be on the road, so...
What we got going right now, actually, is in Taunton, we're talking about getting the rights to the rail bed up to TMLP. TMLP's talking about letting the path go through their property, and then getting back on road into Dayton, and maybe trying to go, you know, drop down somewhere after you get by Aquaria. Maybe Sandpipe O'Lane or something, or they go down there and maybe there's a drainage, you know, down the end of the cul-de-sac, maybe you could get back on there, or someplace else, maybe along the rail bed, and try to get through the Aggie School, and then cross Center Street again. I don't know if they'd have to knock out where they filled in under Center Street, you know, they filled that in because of work.
They didn't, they didn't wanna spend the $9,000 for a culvert, they told them to fill it in, so...
I know.
You know what I mean? So I'll tell you for a fact, if you wanna put one in, I will physically fight that.
Okay.
Because that's probably gonna be about a half a million dollar project, and it's gonna go to nowhere. Little section, stay on the road, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it, but, little bit here, a little bit there, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I'm not gonna spend that kind of money foolishly.
No, what we'd have to do is, um, actually, if we're gonna stay on road, we'd have to work with Mass DOT anyways, and what you'd have to do on Route 138, is the next time they resurface, do a lane reduction, they go from 12 feet to 11 feet, both lanes, so you can pick up the extra foot on the shoulder, then you could have it on road. shoulder, then you could have it on road. Bike path there will be safe. Right now, they don't have enough room. And that's a big thing. They won't make an exception for it, so, but that's what we're working on. That's part of the Taunton River Trail. And if you guys had, I mean, obviously, you've got the stuff down in Broad Cove, you've done it, it would be a nice sidetrack, you know, go on Riverside, Water Street, go up to Pleasant, go down like the boat ramp and walk through the trail down there, so we can get some signage for you on that, too.
There's a piece of private property down there that we can't use.
We had a trail running from Hot Street right to the, well, we can't, in between, we were brought to Land Court.
I thought there was...
Apparently, Pearson, someone said, Elm Street owns the property. He improved the deal on the property, so we have a stock and go.
Oh, wow. So it's just a little piece of property that's established for...
We can access the trail. Boy Scouts put a lot of work into it.
No, they put a seat, a stone seat with benches.
Really, I liked walking on that trail.
They've got it blocked off.
Okay, so we can, we'll mention that there's obstacles to that.
No, no, but I mean, from Sweet Snoll all the way back through.
Another thing, I know you guys have been working on hiking trails along Broad Cove. Are there any other properties where you think that would be suitable for the development of hiking trails that we should be discussing?
No, I've got, I've got a lot of plans for that property down on Broad Cove.
Okay.
Tentative. And I'm not sure exactly how much we can get done, or I don't even know what it's going to cost.
Okay.
But I've been looking at other properties. I went down and looked at the one in Dartmouth. Have you been down there?
Yeah, it's beautiful.
That one?
The Natural Resources Trust, where they have the, yeah, that's really beautiful.
Yeah, I'm trying to, the guy that did it, the designer that did that, and he did all the paperwork, I've been throwing flowers all over him and doing the best I can, but he won't do another one.
Really?
Yeah.
I think I know this property.
He said it's just too much paperwork, and he was a one-man band, and he gave me a couple of other engineering firms to talk to. I haven't talked to both of them yet, but I will.
You said that there's a property down there with extensive boardwalks on the Solmer? Is that what you're talking about?
That's Natural Resources Trust.
Yeah, that one's really nice. That's a really beautiful walk.
Yeah, well, if you decide to do that, we can help out as an open space committee. I know a lot of the guys.
Oh, I intended to get you.
All right. I'm game, I'm good.
Okay. The other questions, and I don't know if there's a, if there is issues that you guys would be aware of that come up repeatedly, the idea about a dog park or a skate park. One of our thoughts, I guess it's been done in other towns, and I haven't really looked at the feasibility of it myself, is about putting a dog park down by the dump.
Yeah, some of the land down by the town transfer station, where you have land. I was telling the committee that in Kingston, we did that. We got some grant money. We put a dog park right by a lot that's adjacent to the capped landfill, and our transfer station's off to the side, and it's absolutely beautiful. You know, a lot of people used to walk dogs wherever they could. It's nice. I can get you some shots of it and, you know, let you see who did. You and I were talking about that, I think, one time.
No, I don't, I, no, you must have someone else.
Oh, no, Tim, yeah, Tim was...
But now, on the north side of that, you've got a stream going through. On the south side, you've got a stream. So that, that whole area, because you've got pavement.
Right.
You've got the transfer station, then you've got the mound with all the, you know, the fill area. But on both sides, you've got a lot of water.
Okay, so would you...
Two streams, yeah.
Okay.
GEP has some things that they want done, the old landfill down there. Is that what we're talking about?
No, he's talking about the one on Tremont Street.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. No, I'm talking about the one...
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
Off the railroad track.
Okay, so Tremont Street would be a challenge there?
Yeah.
Sounds like it.
Okay. All right.
And then, of course, the skate park, but I don't really know. I think some people have talked about the idea of putting the skate park down by one, by the police, current police station is, I don't know if there's any other options for that that you might be aware of.
I haven't heard anything about it.
Okay.
You going to go skating?
No.
Skateboarding, yeah, skateboarding.
Oh, I'll do that, yeah. I thought you meant ice skating.
No, no, skateboarding, yeah, sorry. I should be more specific.
I'll do that.
All right.
Well, you are just loaded with questions.
I am, I have a whole list. I have one more question, but I can't remember what my notes were meant. Do you remember what Joe meant when I wrote that down?
Which one?
The number two, which I haven't talked about.
Oh, 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 yeah. It says, "Purchase land is commercially strategic." But did we mean conservationally strategic? Yeah.
I'm not sure. Wish I was here, he could explain better his idea of this question.
Yeah, commercial strategic, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, all right, I think that's everything we got.
Yeah.
We'll probably come back with some more later, when we get more questions, but particularly once we get the map, we might have some...
No, appreciate your time.
Yeah, we're grateful for all your time.
Especially like with the Tremont Street site, too, because that was one of the things. You're looking at aerial maps, and it looks like you have a lot more there, and it's a lot more viable than it would appear if you had, that's why you go to the Conservation Commission. You guys have been out there boots on the ground, and if you do have issues of it, it'd be wet or streams or something like that, you don't even want to start thinking about it. Like I said, why waste money doing plans?
Actually, from that area all the way down to 138, there's a state easement down through there.
Your car, huh?
Down through, down behind where Jim lives, down through, across the Oak Somerset Avenue, goes behind Taunton Cove, and then out into the river.
I guess, last general question, do you have any issues that you'd like to put in the open space plan to help you guys do your job better, like any of the actions that we put in there? Are there any river, stream habitat issues that we could help you with, like recommend, you know, any type of assistance to the Conservation Commission in developing recreational properties or priorities for land acquisition or, oh, that's a smile.
Give me your phone number, Bill.
Okay.
And I could catch you up.
All right.
Yeah, because it would be important for us to, if we want to apply for grants or whatever, that we're all coordinated and on the same page about what we want.
When I started this program, about 25 years ago, the platforms, the observation platforms that I was building, I applied to three different places for grants, and it just got ridiculous with the paperwork, and they just overwhelmed me.
Yeah.
So I asked these guys to give me the money, and they did.
Yeah, you want some more?
Did you want to do some more stuff like that, like platforms and things like that? Because...
Oh, I'm building them now.
Okay, because here's one of the things. Now that Taunton River is designated wild and scenic, the National Parks Service has periodic grants programs, and one of the programs that they're doing right now is a program to increase public access to the river or tributaries of the river. And anything that will open the river up to people like that, like, it could be platforms, it could be canoe put-ins, things like that. So give me a call, and we can talk about it, because...
Oh, I will.
Yeah, I actually have a stewardship meeting coming up, and your delegates have been really good. Mark Duffy's been really good, so I can probably talk to Jamie Fosberg, who's the National Parks Coordinator for the series, the rivers and streams program coordinator.
When you've got time, I'd like to take, I'd like you to come with me down 138.
Absolutely.
You know, and I've got a, I've already got an open space platform there. You know, right adjacent to the parking lot. You can see it from the highway.
Okay.
But I got another, I got the material coming in Friday for another one.
Okay.
There's one past the old dump on the railroad track at the turnaround, and I'd like, and I'd like to show you what I'd like to do with keeping Dartmouth in mind.
Okay, yeah. And something like that, where you've already got the material for the platform?
Well, we're going to do a half a dozen.
Oh, yeah, but the National Parks might be able to put up match money to get the construction done, because you've already got the material.
Right.
So that would be a match for a federal grant.
Good.
It cuts the paperwork down considerably.
Good, 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 good.
Yeah, all right, let's, let's talk.
We'll talk.
All right.
Bill, one other thing, you were talking about that bike path on the railroad bridge.
Yeah.
Remember I told you, we issued an enforcement order to a guy on that?
Yeah.
And he actually blocked off the trucks so that no one could, we haven't, I haven't been there in, well, since the fall.
Yeah.
So I don't know if everything's been removed, but that's, that is state property or town property.
That came up after you told me, and the state followed up on it. I told them I talked to you.
Okay.
And they sent the state guys out there, and they told them the same thing, because nothing had happened. I said, "Jim Digges from the Dayton Conservation Commission had gone out there and told the guy." The state went out there, they talked to him. The last I heard, this was, again, about two or three months ago, he hadn't done anything even after the state had been out there. So, I mean, a guy like that, maybe she's going to take them to come out there and hook up the winch to the trailer and say, "Here you go. See you later, bye."
If they put on the bike path, they're going to take it out anyway.
Yeah.
He doesn't own the property.
No, he doesn't, but he...
He has parcels on both sides.
Yeah, I guess when he came out there, he kind of claimed, you know, kind of like...
Oh, yeah, that's, oh, sure.
Well, I didn't know what, you know, I didn't, I didn't know, so, yeah, but they followed up after you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know. I'll check up on that.
Okay, please do, because it's state property that's being blocked.
Yeah.
So our jurisdiction is...
Yeah.
It's an upland, we can't force them to take it out.
Right, right.
I'm sure if there's going to be a bike trail, that it'll go, whether he likes it or not.
Yeah, I think we're going to put a bridge over him, though.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right. Stay in touch.
I will.
All right.
Okay. Bill, you attended a stormwater meeting?
Yeah, Pius, Tom Pius got me in, drug me in that, and...
That's what you left in my pickup truck. That's part of what you want to talk about tonight?
Yes, I left this in your pickup truck?
Yep.
What's it about, Charlie?
That's forefront.
What?
Ishar Heshen, County Street.
That's the...
Somerset Avenue.
Somerset Avenue, yeah. That's the new development that's going to go...
He's before the planning board right now, trying to get a conservation subdivision.
Yeah, he got, he got denied. He got denied.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Planning board denied his request for a subdivision. And the first thing they asked him was, "Have you been to conservation?" And he said, "Nope."
Yes, he has.
Yeah.
That's what he, that's what he did. That's why he had a...
They were looking for a Conservation Commission to say, "Fine, you're okay with your plan."
No, we're not the planning board.
No.
In order to have a plan that we can deal with, it's got to be, the planning board has to approve it.
And they're not, and they're not going to, and they didn't.
That's the same way it worked when they wanted to build the apartments. We didn't, they didn't come to us first.
Now they have to go to the planning board.
Yeah. Well... The planning board put some heat on, apparently they don't agree with Jim Aggais, the building commissioner. He has to approve all these applications.
Right.
And he uses a formula, I don't know if you remember, but probably 12, 13 years ago, maybe a little longer, the planning board didn't want pork chop lots, you know, like mine.
Yeah.
So they proposed that they had to have 100 by 100-foot area vertical, you know, just rectangular, no long driveways and the house stuck in between. And the planning board now wants to strengthen or increase the...
The size of the lot.
Yeah. They want to include, because if he lays out 100-foot of buildable area, sometimes it overlaps into wetlands. Well, they always have to file with us anyway, so that's not a problem as far as I can see. And he doesn't consider it a problem either. And by law, setbacks, they wanted to change it anyway so that it just encompassed uplands. Right now, they have a rule that only 30% of the lot can be wetlands, so there's a ratio. He's not going to change the way he does it, and they were pushing him to adopt a different rule. Right now, they're in a negotiation, whether it comes to lawyers and pushing and shoving, we'll see. But right now, it's just a gentleman's discussion. The digital, digitizing our records.
Oh, yeah, how's that going?
They're applying for a grant.
Good luck with that.
They're in the progress, I don't know. The young girl over there that works for ZBA, Nicole, whatever her last name is, she's doing the application. Jim seems to think that they'll be able to get it, Jim Aggais. So our records are still in there. I noticed a couple of desks over here. I thought they were moving our stuff out of there, but he said they won't move it until there's space in the new building. And talking about the new building, there's no room for us with the ZBA.
Right.
The girl that's there now and the desk, the room they have, they've gobbled it all up. But there is a room upstairs.
Yeah.
But we can't use it until they...
They fixed the roof. I was over there, was it today? Yeah, I was over there this morning.
Yeah.
Just looking around.
Is it a decent room upstairs?
I didn't, I didn't go upstairs.
I didn't go either. But he said there is a room, and it would be available for us.
Whenever, wherever they put us is okay, because we'll, we'll make do. We don't...
Well, once the police get out of the old police station, we could use that.
No.
It's surrounded by wetlands, so we'd be ready to go.
Bill's going to go roller skating. That's where Bill's gonna go roller skating.
Skateboarding, Jim.
Skateboarding. Skateboarding.
Bill, stormwater, stormwater meeting.
At this point, they're just trying to educate the community about stormwater. Not too many people understand, you know, just how dangerous stormwater can be and what kind of runoff we're getting. So they got pamphlets printed up. They handed them out at a couple of sessions at the high school, and they're gonna do it at the Cowship Festival. And the pamphlet's pretty nice and informative. And they've given out shopping bags, reusable shopper bags that say Dayton...
Where's ours?
Huh?
Where are ours? Where's our shopping bags?
Oh, we'll go to one of the things, one of the meetings, and you'll have them. Anyway, it's... Pretty much that's all we've been doing. We haven't had anything to do with stormwater regulations. And so we got this...
Serpeth. They're from Serpeth. Bill Nappa, Polly Bill...
But the woman with them wasn't from Serpeth?
Yes, they're all from Serpeth.
Every one of them?
Not Ellen.
Who was she from?
She's from Main Street, Dayton.
Oh, but she doesn't... Oh, she had all the questions.
Yeah.
She was... It seemed like she was...
She's chairman of the Open Space Committee.
Oh, okay.
That's who we're dealing with, Open Space Committee.
Open Space. Okay, so there's Bill, and who was the other guy that was here?
I don't know.
He was with them.
He didn't say anything. I don't think he wrote his name down.
No, nobody did.
These are the two right here, Bill and Ellen.
Okay. David, Jack, he was the... Joe Fernandez.
Helen Bidlak, that name?
Oh, he... Okay. Ellen Bidlak, yeah.
I don't know why I remember that. I can't remember my own name sometimes.
Okay, okay.
She's responsible for you paying the extra taxes.
Okay, good. Okay, the Horton Street project, we won on both areas, on the appeal. It remains a perennial stream.
Yep, it stays perennial, and...
He has to file a notice of intent.
Well, he told us at the field that a negative, a determination of applicability or an IDA doesn't apply there.
Yeah.
Because there's...
Stream.
Stream banks, so... So he kicked Brandon in both legs. Both knees got broken.
Yep.
I thought they would give it to him, because he did take some good pictures, and it was dry as a bone.
But it was also undroped. We were having a drought.
But they didn't declare a drought. That's the problem. They didn't declare a drought for southeastern mass, so he did have a good shot.
I declared a drought for nothing.
I mean, under that, the segregation of the river wasn't running either, so...
No, I know, I know. The Three Mile River almost stopped.
They could have changed that... Three Mile, too? No, that...
It was low. It was very, very low.
But it kept running.
Yeah, it always runs. Okay, final supplement.
That's Southeast, South Coast Rail, they're having their final NEIR or whatever they call it.
Charlie, you didn't want to file this?
I'll put it in this folder. I don't know where you got it, but...
I don't either. I don't remember. Somebody handed it to me and said, "Make sure Charlie has this," and I said, "Yeah, I will." You know, I know who it was now, the girl with the good candy. She's at the other building now.
Rosalyn?
Rosalyn, yeah.
Rosalyn.
Oh, we're still on TV.
Yeah, okay. All right, we're all set.
We've got one more thing to do.
Oh, okay.
The project we approved tonight?
Okay. You know, if we get that town forest up on Chestnut Street, and then we got the additional 10 acres of conservation land, they're not connected. Was it Dayton Industries that owns it between?
No, it'd be Tony.
I was gonna say, that would be a nice walking path, a hiking path now.
It is a path there now, according to...
You don't have to try to think of her name. That place has got trails all through it.
All through it, yeah.
All through it, all the way to Tremont Street and Taunton.
No kidding?
Yeah. It's full of trails. And nice open trails, too, because it's using...
There's a golf course in there?
She said it would like to clean.
Burt Street, is it Burt Street? It goes over to Burt Street, Glebe Street?
No, I believe it does.
No.
Is it not Burt? North Walker. It comes out on North Walker and a couple of places, and it comes out...
North Walker is far to the east.
What?
It's far to the east.
Yeah, I'm telling you, this is a big piece of land with trails all through it.
But you have to cross Burt Street in order to get to North Walker?
No.
Yes.
Yeah. Burt Street's the next one off, no, right across from the dog track.
I don't know where Burt Street is, but if you go down 44...
Yeah.
Take a right on Walker at the Dunkin' Donuts thing there.
At South Walker.
No, left is the Dunkin' Donuts.
Left is North Walker.
No, right. Right, that's Walker.
No, South Walker runs out by the old Mount Old Dairy. North Walker comes out...
Dunkin' Donuts.
Runs out by Dunkin' Donuts and out by the fire station.
Yeah.
Because of Tremont Street.
Yeah, Tremont.
Yeah, but before it gets to Tremont Street, Glebe comes out, and then there's Glebe Circle. And the trails that are in that piece of woods come all the way out to Glebe and North Walker.
Well, there's an unfinished street just beside, just beyond the school.
Glebe Street, that's Glebe Street, Charlie.
That's Glebe. That goes, yeah, that goes all the way out there. But that crosses Burt Street.
That crosses Burt.
Crosses Burt, yeah. It crosses Burt.
Yeah.
Because Burt goes from 44 to Tremont, Tremont Taunton.
I've traveled... That was one of my favorite cone hunting places when I was young. And I traveled all them trails in there at night, in the daytime, looking for dogs that I lost at night. And I've been in and out of that place for 20 years. It's full of good trails, full of streams. There's too many deer in there now to put dogs in there, go hunting out, because deer, it's a poor idea. But anyway...
Okay, I just...
It's time for a motion.